I would like to call the Monday, January 22nd South St. Paul School Board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Hume.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
La La Birdie.
Here.
T Felton.
Here.
And Chair Roche.
Absolutely.
That's seven present.
All right, if we could all rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to the real exciting parts of the night, I would like to ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as our Committee of the Whole meeting for January 8th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Everyone's moving real quick tonight, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, without the motion carries. And tonight, I get to invite Ben Kush up from tri-districts to presentation for our Quality in Action tonight. Welcome.
All right, thank you, thank you. Does it matter which mic? I get to choose, all right. Well, thank you Chair Roche, Superintendent Zambrino, and the members of the board and cabinet. So we're here once again, kind of our annual visit to talk a little bit about what we're up to. I see lots of friendly faces, I see a few new faces as well, so I thought it worthwhile just to revisit a little bit of what tri-district CAPS, the tri-district Career and College Writing Initiative is all about. Was there a slide deck, Lisa?
There is.
Is it coming? So we go to the next slide. Just a very quick debrief of where we started. You know, back in 2013 and then reauthorized in 2015, there was something that was called the World's Best Workforce Legislation, as many of you know. And at the time, you know, the tri-district superintendent said, hey, we've got a long history working together, this might be another space that we can collaborate, support some of our individual efforts, develop some economies of scale. Some of that, you know, some of the early work in that collaboration came together under what was described as an innovation pilot project through MDE. So we had that recognition and felt that that gave us some, kind of some license and permissions, as it were, to do things a little bit differently, which was really the intent of the grant. And so a lot of our work to date has been around, you know, developing some of these career pathways. How are we leveraging the strengths that exist within our individual districts? How do we leverage those across districts and really reap the benefits, make sure everybody is able to reap those benefits across the board. And so what that has meant has been the development of, you know, if we're all familiar with the MCIS Career Wheel, you know, one of our goals from the onset is, hey, can we get some kind of immersive programming to exist in each of those areas? And, you know, over the last eight years, you know, we're five for six, which isn't too bad. And so you can see, you know, on your screens or in your packets, the spaces that we've been able to do some of this programming. Business and Entrepreneurship, Healthcare, Transportation, Skilled Trades, you know, Computer Science IT, that's kind of the baby, it's only two years old. Business and Entrepreneurship is in its fifth year of implementation, Healthcare Transportation are in their sixth year. And then Exploring Education has kind of come and gone a little bit. That's a little bit of an interesting one. Tim Keneely is who we work with at South St. Paul High School in collaboration with Simley High School to pull together an Exploring Education course in concert with Metropolitan State University and their School of Urban Education. A little bit about what these courses are and what they look like. We do a whole lot. You know, we have a fall semester course, we have a spring semester internship. Interestingly enough, and fortunate for us, I think, and for this evening, you know, we're at that inflection point, right, where we're making the transition from the fall semester to the spring. And we've got some students to talk about, you know, Louise, you're doing double duty tonight, so I thank you for that. But we've got some other students as well to talk about their fall experience, some of the things that they're looking forward to in the spring semester. And so really, you know, in the fall, you know, we do all kinds of things. You know, a big part of it is getting students to say, you know, oh my gosh, I never knew healthcare could look like this. Oh my gosh, I never knew this particular career field meant working in a job, starting out on a career pathway that looks like this. One of the other unique pieces that we do for new members to the board is they're a Team TOT program, right? We have a core element, a core credit element for each of our programs. That's English for most of them, it's mathematics for Computer Science IT, and then we have an elective credit that's connected to the course as well, tied to, you know, the industry, right? And really, it really kind of varies by program. And so, you know, in between that core and elective, you know, I kind of call it the CAPS sandwich of sorts. In between and in the middle is what we have that's called, you know, our professional skills development, curriculum program aspect of the program, whatever you want to call it. And a lot of that comes from our partners. We reach out to our business partners and we say, hey, what should our kids know, be able to do, have an opinion about? What are the attitudes, the aptitudes that they should bring with them? And invariably, right, across industries, across partnerships, it's, you know, it's awesome if they come to us gifted in a particular skill set. It's awesome if they have technical skills in this area. But you know what? Here's what we really need. Are they here? And are they here on time? And what does engagement look like when they're with us? You know, are they the kind of folks that people want to work with? Are they the kind of folks that we want, that I want working with me? You know, we can teach them a lot of things. And in fact, you know, some of our partners say, hey, well, we'll pick up the tab for some of it. But we really need them here. And so in that middle space, we talk a lot about, again, professional skills or durable skills, whatever you want to call it. And some of it is very product-based. So our students walk out with resumes and cover letters, LinkedIn accounts. We do, we work with Best Prep to do professional communication. There's an e-Mentor program that we engage with, mock interviews, different kinds of things like that. Then we also have what we kind of call our process skills, you know. What is the, you know, are you here every day? You know, we call it attendance, but let's be honest, that's practicing being here. And when we have guest speakers in, we call that practicing being engaged, along with the course content, material, and things like that. And so we do all that to really bring us to where we are now. And that's getting ready for the spring semester internship. So right before the holidays, we got out the resumes, we started working on cover letters. We have great partners, you know, both in South St. Paul and across the tri-district, and even dipping up into St. Paul and Minneapolis, to give our students an opportunity to do what we call do the work, in the form of an internship. 120 hours plus with a community partner, and then continuing, you know, the internship really becomes that elective credit that students earn. But then we work with our English teachers, we work with our math teachers, to make sure that that core elective credit is continuing to be earned across the second semester, because they need that for graduation. And so if we can get to the next slide, Lisa. So just some examples, folks, of who it is that we work with. You can see what I've highlighted in the gray there. Those are some of our community partners that are located here in South St. Paul. We thought that was worth, that that was worth mentioning. So there's, that's what Business and Entrepreneurship looks like. You know, there's Computer Science IT. We were super psyched that...
Tina Moses.
Tina, yes, the Tina jumped in with both feet and is super excited about working with our kids. Thank you for saving me there, guys. You can see that. Healthcare Careers and Medicine, really just a broad scope of folks in that space. And then if we look at Transportation and what that looks like. And I'd also be, and Education as well. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, we've got some of our CAPS staff members here. Joe Burke from South St. Paul, and Hannah O'Brien from South St. Paul, and then Grant Morris, all the way over from Mendota Heights. Grant runs, works with our Computer Science IT program, Joe with Healthcare, and Hannah with Transportation and Trades. And so that's enough about me, and that's enough from me. So if we could have students, if you want to make your way up. So we've asked a few students to join us. Louise, yeah, jump on over. Just to kind of hear what they have to say. Maybe it's something about the fall, maybe it's something about what you're looking forward to in the spring semester. And then Grace is here, and she'll introduce herself. But we also have students who have a successful first year. They join us as a junior, and they say, you know, this is going well. I'm going to take another run at this for a second year within the CAPS program. And so Grace brings that unique perspective as well. So, go ahead, guys.
Okay, well, I'm Grace. And last year, I did an internship with Bendola. It's a coffee house, and it's in Eagan, so it was three minutes from my house, which was actually really nice. And I got to learn from the manager there, and just like, I got a lot of real-world experience, which was really nice. And now I work there full-time, which is awesome. And this year, I am working with my church. I'm doing a high school internship there, and I'm learning a lot from my youth director and ministry work, which is really awesome. So yeah, it's been a great year so far, and I'm excited for the spring. So yeah.
So my name is Victoria. I'm a senior. This is my first year of tri-district, I mean, via tri-district student. And I have learned a lot, like during fall, I make new friends, like Diana. She's a good person. And then for this spring, I'm looking forward to like, have making, I mean, learn a lot, learn more about like professional skills. Oh, sorry. I didn't know that. My hat gets sore. So for this spring, I'm looking forward to learn more for my internship place. And yeah, I hope to like...
Where's your internship, Victoria?
Oh, University of Minnesota.
Oh, fancy.
I love that place, by the way.
So I'm Louise, as you guys know. I've learned a lot. We've been to two of, two field trips that I've loved. They've both been with Career Pass. They have highlighted a lot of careers that you can do right out of high school, which is a pathway that I want to take. In the spring, I'm doing an internship with Family Oak Service, which is a tree cutting service. So that's going to be fun, exciting.
My name's Diana. I'm a junior in high school at South St. Paul, and during the fall semester, I learned a lot about professional skills, and how to write a resume and cover letter, and I really found that helpful for my future and for the, my future career. And then for the spring semester, I'm going to be doing an internship at Heart to Home, which I'm super excited about, and getting world-class experience.
Well done, everyone. Any, well, before you all disappear. We may have some questions. Any questions from the board?
I would just be curious as to, what are your plans when you graduate? Any intention for a certain college, or what's your, what's your career going to be?
I'm going to go first. So I want to be a nurse, especially an RN, and I want to go to Concordia College, which is, yes, I got accepted.
Excellent. Congratulations.
I'm looking at going to Hope College in Michigan, actually, and I got into the second round and final round for this program called Hope Forward, which I could get four years tuition free. So I'm hoping to go there, and I'm looking into elementary education right now.
Oh, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Like I said, I want to go into trades right after high school. So either looking at construction or something landscaping.
Then I hope to go to View of M after high school, and I want to become a RN nurse.
Thank you.
Great.
And I have a question for you. If you could pick one, like, classroom skill that you have found the most useful in your internships, what has been something that you found really helpful when you're, well, you're just starting your internships? What things from the classroom, I guess, have really stood out to you as helpful for careers?
I mean, for me, as a first-generation student, Ms. O'Brien has helped me a lot with writing, so that's really helpful.
I saw some nods behind you as well.
I would say for me, last year, I did the Business and Entrepreneurship one, and I would say in the classroom, we did a lot of like work together, which was really nice. And you worked a lot with like other people around you, and that was just really helpful because it's really good to know. So yeah.
So for me, I'm going to say communication skills, because, and I mean, and teamwork skill, by the way, because English is not my first language, so I have been improved a lot, by the way.
That's great.
Yes.
I would also say communication skills and important to reaching out to your teachers and getting help that you need.
Great job, guys. Thank you very much for sharing your stories with us.
Thank you a lot, students. And so we also thought it'd be helpful this evening to bring up, invite Megan Diselkamp up from a great partner of ours, who's been with us really from the get-go, and help me. And so Megan, I'm going to look to you to, because I've always known them as REEM Kenworth. You know, so they're just down the hill at the old Stockyards area. When they built their new facility down there, they were super excited to come on with us. They've just been an outstanding partner from, from the get-go. But as I've gotten to know them and as I've gotten to learn more, right, it's like the best part of my job, is I get to learn all kinds of things. I also get to evaluate some career decisions, but, because there's so, there's just so much cool going on. But, you know, there's, there are part of, REEM Kenworth is part of a much larger organization of REEM Family Companies, and I'll let Megan talk more to that.
I was, yeah, I was almost going to change, make you change it. I get it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There we go, okay. Good evening, everyone. So as you said, I am Megan Diselkamp. I'm the Brand Engagement Coordinator at REEM Family Companies, or as more you probably know, REEM Kenworth, like, we've already established, which is, for those of you that don't know, a local commercial truck dealership located like right down the street. It took me four minutes to get here, on Concord. And we are a woman-owned and family-owned local company that tries to be pretty involved in the community. Besides selling new and used Kenworth trucks, REEM Family Companies also offers parts, service, and leasing options to those within the trucking industry throughout Minnesota, Wisconsin, and South Dakota. We have seven dealerships and eight leasing locations, and employ about 350 total employees and team members. So the main thing to know about the trucking industry is that it is an essential part of getting each of us everything that we need every day, from gas in our cars to bananas for breakfast. But unfortunately, our industry has started to realize in more recent years that not as many students are actually, we're starting to realize in more recent years just how few students are actually aware of, first, the importance of the trucking industry, and then, secondly, all the potential career options available to them in trucking. So we especially seen this recently with the bigger drop in students choosing trades, which we like to encourage for their future careers. Because of this, in recent years, we have really started to see a huge increase in the amount of time and resources that companies in the trucking industry are putting into informing and equipping students for potential jobs in our industry. That is a big reason why REEM is regularly looking for local organizations to partner with that help our company not only get in front of high school and college-age students, but also to potentially get them into our facilities so they can see hands-on what a truck dealership is like, and all the different positions and jobs needed to keep our company running. So one of those organizations is that we've been partnering with for five years now is the tri-district CAPS program. Our company has partnered with CAPS in many ways throughout the years. One way is that each year, we like to host all of the CAPS students at our dealership here in South St. Paul for a tour of our facility, where we show them everything from diesel technicians in the shop, working on trucks, to how our parts are stored in our warehouse, and how different people throughout the company are working and doing day-to-day. When possible, after the tour we have done in the past too, is we like to get the chance to have students, give them the opportunity to ask our professionals questions about their jobs and the industry itself. These tours themselves have helped our company reach more students, get more of the word out about trucking and trades, and, which is a big goal of our companies. Personally, for my department in marketing, we have worked with the CAPS program mostly through hosting student interns. Marketing has had a total of four interns from the CAPS Business Program in our department, and then our company has also had three interns from the Trades and Transportation Program to help out within parts and service departments. And we are hoping to get two more, hopefully, parts interns this year as well. From our close involvement with the CAPS program, my team has started to notice that the most success comes from the program for both the company and the person mentoring the student has the time and desire or want to be a professional mentor for the students. A great example of this is our marketing intern from a couple of years ago, who is currently attending college. It had been a really mutually beneficial experience that I felt, as she was being, she was able to talk to me and my boss, and we helped her figure out kind of the direction she wanted to go, the college she wanted to go to, and we've even written recommendation letters for her for jobs and college. And then in return, we got her help and got to see like her different point of view as well, which is always nice to have, especially when you're in communications and trying to stay up to date. So REEM has also, just by chance, also hired, not by chance, but hired a couple of people indirectly from the program. One was a former student intern, and then the other was a student's parent. I highly, I think it was actually the student was like, my dad should work here. I highly recommend any other local businesses or organizations that are considering and partnering with tri-district CAPS program to do it, especially if they do have the time, facility, resources, or employees with the desire to mentor. So, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being a part of that.
And so, you know, whether it's me or our instructors, our students, our partners, if there are additional questions, happy to take them and...
How many totals, how many total students do we have in the program this year?
Across the five, across the tri-district and across the five programs, we have about 120 students.
Nice.
And they're all, they're all juniors and seniors. I don't know if I touched on that, or if that, just make, if that didn't come through, just making sure. So we're getting ready to step out into, you know, as we're getting, is, you know, not only South St. Paul, but our other partner schools. You know, registration time is upon us, and so, you know, this is always fortuitous time to make students and families aware of the programs, the opportunities that exist. And, you know, when that time comes, be looking, you know, be talking with counselors, be talking with instructors, be talking with administrators, reach out to other students. If there are questions, I'm certainly always available, and, you know, the folks over at Chuck and his team over at the high school are, have just been wonderful in terms of making kids aware and helping, helping with the success and growth of the programs.
Outstanding.
Yes. Thank you for posting the sheet that said of all the different classes available, you know, for students. Is there any potential at this point for any other possible offerings to students in the future?
So we're always kind of working on that. You know, as I, as I mentioned, we're five of six for the, for the Career Wheel, right? I think the one space where programming doesn't exist, and it's a little bit tricky, but it's in the space of agriculture. What's interesting about that, though, is you can imagine with the, with the, you know, the electrification of vehicles, of alternative energy sources, you know, there's been some conversation around, well, you know, it's hard not to talk about, you know, sustainability and natural resources while talking about agriculture, but it's also hard not, again, not to talk about, you know, wind and solar, and where do all of those things fit into it. I think food systems is something that's been tossed around as well, and that all fits nicely within that package, particularly if the goal is to, to have a, you know, to have a spoke in all, in all six areas. So that's a conversation, I think, that we continue to have. You know, for others that are unfamiliar with CAPS, one of the other unique aspects of it is that our programs are offsite, right? And by that, I mean, our business partners host our programs. You know, Transportation and Trades is down at North American Trailer in Inver Grove Heights. Evolve Workplace up on Wentworth hosts our Business and Entrepreneurship program. Inver Hills Community College is a wonderful partner for our healthcare program. And then Computer Science IT is hosted by Two Rivers High School. And a lot of that has to do with, they've been, they've been wonderful supporters within the tech space about bringing our students in. Our students are actually doing, you know, they do technology repairs and different kinds of things like that with that district. And, you know, that's a model that we hope to create across our other district sites. So it's a long-winded question to, answer to your question, but I think it flushes it out a bit as well.
Thank you.
We're always looking for partners in that ag-natural resources, sustainability space.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Ben.
Yes, thank you.
Always the most exciting part of our business meetings each night. For public listening session, which always happens first meeting in the month, right here at 4:15 at City Hall, or via our website, can be accessed at any time. We did not have any public listening submissions prior to this board meeting. I will next turn over to Vice Chair Anne Claflin for some highlights from our Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you. Yes, the Committee of the Whole meets second and fourth Mondays of the month, immediately before these televised board business meetings. Those Committee of the Whole meetings are open to the public, even though they're not televised. You can come join us at City Hall at 5 o'clock. Tonight, we discussed the budget that we'll beginning, that we are at the beginning of for this next cycle, and reviewed some of the revisions that have come through since our budget has been approved for this current year. A few points about where our budget is and the things that we are considering. We're always looking at the increases in the expenses that the school district faces, and that is balanced with the declining revenues that we are also facing. Our funding from the state always falls a bit further short than the costs that we are incurring. So we have to balance those needs that we have with our capacity to deliver on our promise to educate our young people. So it's an ongoing challenge for all school boards. We are especially paying attention to the class sizes and our declining population. That's a real challenge for us here in South St. Paul. But to guide our discussion around setting the budget for the next year, we have our goal. We want to continue having a budget that really puts resources toward improving our student outcomes, making sure that we're delivering on our promise to our students, balancing all of the needs that we have with our current situation of the declining enrollment. And we have some limits on where we don't want our budget to drive us. So that discussion is just beginning. It will continue over the next few months as we finalize our budget for the next school year. And then our Committee of the Whole has recessed, and we will resume after this meeting concludes to discuss our board meeting structures, see if we can restructure how we conduct our meetings for the Committee of the Whole, and our business meetings to better serve our community and the capacity of our board.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next, I'll turn this over to Superintendent Dr. Zambrino for some highlights around the district.
Well, thank you, Chair Roche, and thank you to anyone who's tuned in, live streaming or watching this later, hoping everyone got through that bitter cold streak okay. You know, it's been, now, knock on wood, it's been a pretty easy winter in this chair. Last year, I got to run for my money as a new superintendent, so I guess the bonus with the cold weather is we saw the sun. So now we're a little better to walk to school or waiting for the bus, but not so much sunshine. But it is a fun time going on, always a lot going on in the district. And tomorrow is just a big night, so we have our kindergarten registration at both Lincoln and Capoja at 6 o'clock. So a great opportunity for families to get into the building, learn about the school, meet the principals, other staff, get those questions answered. I know, as a parent and as a former principal, how many questions come on those, and there's no bad questions, please bring those questions, and so you can walk out of there feeling better. But I'll tell you, I've been in both buildings many times, and it doesn't matter where you end up, you're going to be in great shape. Our teachers, our support staff, others are amazing. But if you do come, some helpful things to bring along would be a birth certificate, and proof of age, as well as proof of residency and immunization record. That one's a little stickier sometimes. We do have state law that requires immunizations, specific immunizations. So if you have questions about that, you can find out about that, and we can certainly help get people connected to resources there. But most importantly, I want you to come and see the schools and get excited for next year, and we'll send you home with a little Packer Pride swag. We shared this last time, but we're coming up here this week. We've got a digital learning day for our high school. So pre-K through 8 is a non-student day, but we had to make a little shift around our calendar. And so students will be engaged in digital learning on Friday. So look for information from your teachers if you're still trying to figure out what that looks like, but should be pretty straightforward. And then this week is known as Paraprofessional Appreciation Week. Our paraprofessionals here prefer the title of Education Support Professional. So those can kind of be used interchangeably depending on your context. But ESPs, if you hear that term, that's who we're talking about. Having been a special education teacher myself, as well as working with English Having been a special education teacher myself, as well as working with English learners who are new to country, I know how important their role was for me to ensure the success of the students in the classroom. And then, of course, having been a principal and now superintendent, I just, I often talk to, to my ESPs as, you know, really being a, like the glue sometimes, it helps hold it together, especially when, you know, kids have unique needs, the teachers are trying to meet so many needs, and, and you just look at the smiling faces of students in this picture and what, what the ESPs mean to them. So Governor Walz released a proclamation, and so we'll make sure that they get copies of that. And then they're being celebrated in the school. So I love at the elementary, they do, like I was at Lincoln last year when they did a parade through the school, and they have all the ESPs come through and get high fives, and I know they're doing similar things at Capoja, and then at the secondary, just recognizing them with treats. So just want to give a big shout out to all of our ESPs and say, you know, thank you for what you do for our students, our families, and certainly for your colleagues. Some highlights around the district, this is one that always impressed me, the AAA Award winner. So congratulations to our two AAA Award winners. They're chosen for their commitment to academics, arts, and athletics. So one senior boy, one senior girl, from each, lost my page there, from each high school is honored, and so we have two from South St. Paul we're very proud of. They have to maintain a 3.0 GPA or higher, and then participate in league-sponsored athletic and fine arts activities. So we always are shooting for our students to have a very well-rounded educational experience. We had some conversation about our values around the arts and activities and other things in our Committee of the Whole, and so, great to see students who are able to take advantage of that. Had a really nice conversation around our Tri-District CAPS program, and actually, we had a really fun event for our entrepreneurship program, so I was able to attend that. The students had a Shark Tank-style pitch event. So four students, one from Josh here from South St. Paul presented, and they pitched their business idea to get support for internships and grant money. I got to tell you, when, when Josh presented, one, he was so articulate, which speaks to the education he's received, you know, just, even his vocabulary, but his process. So he ended up designing a, a board game. So he started with, he built it out of Lego, and then he's like, "Well, that wasn't giving me what I needed," so he moved to Styrofoam, and then he mocked up a whole mock board game. He actually went so far as to have a real, full-scale model of it made, so he folded it out. I mean, it was impressive, and then his kind of aspiration is to spin the game off and do a video game. So I was like, wow, this is like, so cool, to think our kids are getting these kinds of opportunities. And so he'll get that internship opportunity, get some support, but just the experience of doing that, you look at the picture there, I don't know, I probably have been a little nervous as an 11th grader standing in front of that crowd. He just carried himself with the poise and excellence you would expect of a Packer. But just again, the creativity that goes into that, and one of the things that we didn't hear earlier from the kids, because they haven't done their internships yet, but super excited to hear about all the internships that they're going to do, and then that, that spring event. I get, I go, you know, each spring, so I'll be able to do it the last two springs. It's really cool to hear how some of them really drives them into their career, but there's also value in the Tri-District CAPS, where sometimes you think you know you want to do this career, and then you try, and you're like, "Yeah, not so much for me." So there's really a lot of value in, in both of those, and you heard Ben make a joke about seeing some of the things that, the opportunities that are out there. So just really cool opportunities there with our CAPS, and really proud of Josh for his pitch there. Another source of pride is Carol Ponco. So Carol Ponco is one of our due process leads. She had been K-12 and is now doing the secondary due process lead, and she was given the inclusive education award from District 917. So for those who aren't familiar, smaller districts like ours partner with an intermediate school district. Ours is 917, so we've talked about the, who's representing us there, but they work with some of the most high-need students, but they also have programs in our sites. And so what they were, why should, Carol was picked, is they said she has been so welcoming and so supportive of the 917 staff who come and work with us here as well. So congratulations to Carol, very well-deserved honor. All right, another fun activity here, we had what would you march for? So students learned about the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. ahead of last week's holiday, and then at Lincoln, they had the opportunity to hear about the 1963 March on Washington, and they were asked a question, "What would you march for?" So you can see some of the things that were on their minds as they were sharing, you know, what matters to them. Also, on the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, there was a great event at First Presbyterian Church, so I know Director Claflin and Chair Roche were able to join. We had Senator Klein, Representative Hanson, Commissioner Atkins, Mayor Francis. I was there, a number of others, sorry if I'm missing anyone, but just great to see how South St. Paul is making a point of, you know, making this point about wanting to be a just community, but it was neat, our students performed, and as I shared at that event, it was great to see our students perform there, but even better that they got to see the elders, the faith leaders, I forgot to mention our faith leaders that were there, you know, saying, "This is a value we have in this community, we're committed to getting it right." So really great way to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And then just some dates to remember, we've got, again, no school for our K-8 students on Friday, we have digital learning for ninth through 12th, and then the 19th is a district holiday, so no school for anybody on the 19th. Some fun events coming up, 25th, we've got movie night, Super Mario Brothers at Capoja, and then the non-student day I just mentioned. And then February 13th, the dine-out fundraiser at Chipotle for Lincoln. As a busy parent, I know it's kind of nice when you can just whip through, grab dinner, and you've helped the school and you've helped your own cause, so please get out there and support those. And then high school, student family connect from 4 to 8 on the 25th, and again, the e-learning and non-student day for the middle school. Lots of activities going on with winter athletics and activities. I mentioned last time, I think our girls hockey team is right around the corner of their 600 win, which would also be for Coach Palmquist. So too many things to list, I heard the one-acts were pretty incredible, and it just, so many great things going on in our district, so thank you to our staff and students and families for making that happen.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have our consent agenda. These are items that are financial claims and staffing and personnel in nature, and have been a part of the board packet that has been presented to us tonight. I am looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that the motion carries. We have no policy items under review tonight, or business items, so won't screw up whether it's a resolution or a vote, so this is one meeting I get to count as a success, that I haven't gotten one of those wrong. But now I'm going to turn to board members for committee updates and informational reports, and I will start with our student board reps, Louise and Renata.
Well, of course, we had the Tri-District meeting, and then we have...
So Student Council is getting together Snow Week for our secondary, starting from February 5th to February 9th, and since I'm on the school, Student Council Board, can give you a little highlights of what we're doing. We're doing hot chocolates. We're having our meeting actually after this, so we're going to be doing posters for our, like, what we're going to wear throughout the week, our grout fits, our fun snow weeks, activities, and also like bags of candies that kids can have them during lunch. I believe they're going to be a dollar, just a bunch of goodies in the one bag during that week. So, yeah. Oh, also, Wednesday, we're going to have our another pack meeting with Mr. Ochaki. We pushed him to get ahead of that because we didn't have one last week, but don't worry, I gave him a hard time. Activities coming up is boys' basketball against Hill Murray this Tuesday, tomorrow, hockey, boys varsity, swimming, and you guys can see the rest of the activities on our website.
Thank you, Renata.
Yeah.
And Louise, thank you.
Thank you. Let me turn this over to Director Weber.
Thank you, Chair Roche. So I am the new South St. Paul representative on intermediate District 917. We had our, I had my first meeting down there, so we have, there's nine total board members on 917 representing nine different school districts from throughout, throughout the area. Our chair is actually from Inver Hills, or Inver Grove Heights School District is our, is the chair of that particular board. So we, at the last meeting, was our first kind of organizational meeting, we elected our chair, our officers. The treasurer is the representative from 197, from West St. Paul, and so lots of good Tri-Districts influence on the, on the 917, 917 board. They approved their audit, so they got their audit report, which is done by the same firm who actually does our audit report, so it looked very familiar to what I have seen. They have reached the settlement agreement with their teachers, so that was very exciting, so we got to approve their new teacher contracts. And there were two new board members of the nine, so me and the board member from Hastings were the two new board members on the board. In terms of other events, I did get to attend the one-act plays this weekend. It was super fun to attend about, I think, over half of the plays that they showed were student-written and student-directed, so always a great chance for students to be able to get the opportunity. They had a middle school one, which is always fun to see middle schoolers running around the stage. They did a, a superhero was trying to find his nemesis to give him inspiration, because he said being a superhero was too boring, and so he needed a nemesis to like, keep him going, and it, they were many, much hilarity ensued. And then they have a competition play that the high school does, it's a Minnesota State High School League formal competition to do a one-act play, and so they did their performance play, and tomorrow is the competition. And I think they said there are eight plays in their subsection, and then the top, I don't remember if it was two or three, then go on to sections, and then the top there go on to state, so it's very similar to an athletic competition, only for acting, so that was fun to watch as well.
Nicky Oliver.
I don't really have much tonight, I just wanted to mention the luncheon on Thursday at Central Square that is going to be supported by our board, and with its, I think it's a loaded baked potato bar, so that starts at 11, or serving starts at 11 and goes till 1:00. So I don't know if any other board members are planning on being there. I will be there to help set up and visit with people, hopefully, we've got a few others that are coming, so, yes, so that's on Thursday, so, thank you.
Director Kim Hume.
Great. Community education met, I guess it was almost two weeks ago now. I was able to listen to a fun discussion about making sure that the three districts are coordinating our programming, so we're not stepping on each other's toes, and how do we make that work? Apparently, there used to be one person who was in charge of doing that for all three districts, and now it's done separately at all the districts, so making sure that we keep those communication paths, so that we have the most options for everyone in our districts, without it feeling like you're like, "Well, do I want to be here in Inver Grove or South St. Paul," you know, jumping around like that. That also led to a very lively discussion about where the line is between adult programming and senior adult programming, and whether people like to be called seniors, so I definitely enjoyed that, I guess that kind of segues. I also will be at the Loaded Baked Potato Lunch on Thursday, so I look forward to seeing people there. And just as a board member, I had the privilege of going to the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference and being present to see Wendy receive a really cool honor from the MSBA, so I'm happy to be able to report that.
Excellent. Director Wendy Felton.
Yes. A few fun things that, that I have been learning about, just so everybody knows, the secondary building, even Lincoln Center and Capoja, if students want to order yearbooks for themselves, they are encouraged at this point to, you can speak with someone in the office about ordering your yearbook, so that you can get it ordered in time for that, because at the high school, they're $65, and they're best to get ordered now. And at Lincoln Center, the yearbooks, if you get a soft-covered one, it's $20, hard-covered ones are $25, and if you're going to order at Capoja, you need to place your order by April 19th to, to be sure and get it ordered. So if you want a yearbook, start ordering it now, if possible. And as we heard how, about how wonderful our theater program is, we just, with our, just our one-act plays, our, our next theater program, which will be in mid-March, from the 15th to the 17th, Mr. Holson, they are doing auditions at the end of this week, on Thursday and Friday, for the shows that will be in March, so any, I know secondary students will be, will be reading in that. And then students at Lincoln Center, another kind of a fun thing, coming up this Thursday, the 25th, it's Bring Your Favorite Stuffed Animal to School. So if you have a teddy bear, or a horse, or a bear, whatever you have, your favorite stuffed animal, you are allowed to bring it to school this Thursday. And then at Capoja, if you're interested, they have Packer Pride winter hats for sale. If you're interested in purchasing one, you can contact your, your staff members there, so you can order a Packer Pride hat, which would be a lot of fun, so. And then at Lincoln Center, another one of their fundraisers, which will be, won't be held for another couple weeks, it will be on Monday, February 5th, which is a PTA fundraiser, will be held at, at the B-52 Restaurant in Inver Grove Heights as, as their fundraiser, and they could get 30% of, of incomes that will be coming into B-52 on that day. And I also am the representative on the, the educational foundation, when we have our monthly meetings there. And it was so exciting, just this, this month, in January here, they had several requests. Staff members were putting in financial requests, so the foundation did give out just under $9,000 to staff members who put in requests for things. And also, coming up now, it's towards the mid, to the end of February, is when the scholarship program applications are given out to our, our seniors at the secondary building, and our scholarship banquet date will be on May 8th, and they will be lining up at least 120 scholarships to be handed out to secondary students, with a minimum of $429,000 of scholarships can be given out to our secondary students again this spring in May. So when students get their, their information to do their applications, we really, truly encourage that. And also, as, as I did receive my MSBA award a week and a half ago at the convention in Minneapolis, this is, this is the one that I received as an all-state school board member honoree. Quite an honor, I'm so thankful to, to the staff members that supported me and submitted the letters of recommendation, so I thank you very much.
Director Tim Felton.
The South St. Paul Open Foundation Board meets this week, so I have nothing to report yet from there, but I just want to reiterate the big milestone coming up for Coach Palmquist, 600 wins in his career. He's been the only coach South St. Paul's had, longest active coach in the country in girls' high school hockey, and he's had 30 seasons, which means he's averaged 20 wins a season, and in a 25-game season, that's a good, good career.
Pretty solid average.
That's tomorrow night, I think somebody livestreams it on SSP Girls Hockey on the YouTube channel, so tune in. Congratulations.
Director Anne Claflin.
Thank you. The Local Issues Committee is meeting this Wednesday at 8:00 AM at Central Square. This is a committee made up of members of the River Heights Chamber of Commerce in South St. Paul, city leadership, school boards, some other community volunteer groups as well. It's a great opportunity to share information about events that are happening, connect across lines that we don't always have quite as open, so it's a great opportunity for us to really work with our city and... us to really work with our city and some of the other companies in town here that are helping our students through programs just like CAPS. So we're kicking off another year of those meetings, 4th Wednesday of the month, 8:00 AM, Central Square. And I did have the opportunity to see some of our high school students at the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration this past Monday, last week already, and I was so impressed by our students. I am especially impressed by the group of young women from our Black Pride organization who stood up and shared their voices in front of a crowd. They're not maybe as familiar as standing in front of an audience as a choir, and I was just blown away by their presence, so. Thank you very much to the students who attended, the community who was there. And if you missed it, it was on Town Square TV, and after watching these school board meetings on Town Square TV, watch for the Martin Luther King replays. And I know my mom and dad are watching, which is why I'm a little more tongue-tied. So, you've got me. That's, don't tell me next time.
Love that, we've got some fans out in the audience, so. Also, some of the ongoing work the board is doing to make sure that we are best serving our community, we had our retreat, a little bit of board training and some discussions about our ongoing board meetings and how we can best serve the district and our community. Those are conversations that will continue tonight, as we had, will resume our Committee of the Whole across the hall, but at this time, with no further items on our business meeting, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed that we adjourn at 6:52, and we'll resume our Committee of the Whole meeting next door. Thank you so much, everyone.